Meeting is called to order. Please stand for the pledge on the screen. Digital. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic from which it stands, one nation, under a ground, individual, liberty, and justice.
You betcha. April.
Present.
Eric is absent. Jeff Conway.
Yep.
Danielle here. Darcy here. And I'm here. Do you need me doing first and last names?
No.
Okay. And Greg is in. Greg is in. Thank you. Agenda, are there any adjustments to the agenda? Your motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second. Any... No. Discussion? Any discussion?
Discussion.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Ayes.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved. Do we have any community input tonight? Okay. Moving right along. Because Morgan isn't here. Ms. Miller, would you like to give the student board member report?
Yes. Okay, so on February 28th, the FCC LA in Leo's had a shoe drive. So it was going on through the month of February and they collected everything, the 28th. And they had shoe boxes all around the community at what the local businesses and at the schools. And I heard there was a large number of shoes collected, which was really awesome. This week, the student council is starting a March Madness bracket for like the college basketball. It's for teachers and students. Which starts tomorrow, because the first game's tomorrow, I think, I don't know. For prize ideas, we're doing a $25 gift card for somewhere local. And then the, some of the other, to the fifth place will get like a free bubbler from Ollie Cart for an item. And then, March 9th, we had the blood drive that was held at our school. It got cut short due to bad weather, but we still had 50 units of blood donated and 25 units were be able, were able to be used, which is 135 lives which are being saved. And then Monday, spring sports started. That's all I have to do.
Any questions for? Thank you. Mr. Brown?
All right, so news from the classroom. Starting off, the business department, National Oreo Day, marketing research, definitely good time. But, application, as silly as it might sound, looking at the Oreos and the branding behind it, also the assortment of flavors, looking into how they've been able to market so heavily and become a National Oreo Day. That's a really big deal, but again, the fun part of it is the kid gets to taste it, our backup, chocolate stuffing Oreos, best one, so they've got good taste. La Clase. Say it again?
Bring an example?
No, sadly. But, La Clase de Español, so advanced Spanish students, this one is a pretty cool idea. They've been interviewing each other in Spanish and writing articles on the topic of mental health. They're also working on responding and discussion, discussing, again, very immersive. Each student, they create goals, plan how to achieve them, again, it's important, set a goal, focus on how to achieve them. But they're also working on identifying mental health resources in the request, uh, request and community. So again, that application. Thank you. Middle school yearbook, also an opportunity, shout out one of our own over here, Brittany Iman, all the work she has done as well. Looked like a ton of fun, sounded like the kids had a really, a really good time with it, but again, great things to come. So, along with that, sorry, I gotta do a better job following along here as well, speech language room with Ms. Vangora. Elementary speech. I like how they kind of lobbied to Mr. Cop to get a class pet, sure there was no pressure involved there. I also enjoy the originality of the name Geico for the Gecko that they got, but it's also, it's very cool. See the kids light, uh, kids faces light up about the fact that they've got an animal in the building. So, math team. Again, it's really cool to see your students at work and competing, but our middle school, they finished sixth. Three students in the top 20. And then high school team finished third place, division, and we had two students placed in the top 10. Those circled would be Kami on the right and then Will on the left. And then, Ms. Bear's second grade class, while won a smoothie party because they raised the most money during the Kids' Heart Challenge. And then, District 300. Excuse me, so, District 300 Foundation helped second grade teachers jump start, uh, jumpstart how to writing unit. They did some artist, artistry with cupcakes, presented all about how to begin your own business, how to make and decorate cupcakes. Again, something to get to expand upon in the business department as they move forward. And then, second grade is at a trip to La Crosse Grove Greenhouse, a lot of hands-on learning experiences about urban growing systems, environmental stewardship, local food systems. I think you guys are seeing a trend of what our focus is here, trying to get the kids out in the community. And then, I would be remiss if I didn't kind of talk up some of my students and our students, of course, as well, in community leadership and student council. They've essentially facilitated the blood drive by themselves. We give them the resources that they need, they run the show, they step up, uh, step up and lead. Our goal this year was way higher than last year, last year's was 52, 72 was our goal this year, which is substantially more than most schools, our size. They were able to get 45 units out of 50, and we were told if things were ever unsmoothie, we would have hit our goal if not exceeded it. So we're gonna try to increase the goal next year, and the Red Cross said this is the best, best blood drive every year. So, again, it's a testament to all of our students and one of them sitting right next to me, so please just give them your all wishes, thank yous, it's all on them. Thank you.
Where's La Crosse Grove Greenhouse?
That I don't know.
The western campus?
Yeah.
Oh, it is.
Sixth and Vine.
Okay.
Yep, it's hidden. I didn't even know it was there until I went there.
I've never heard of it, so that's awesome.
Yeah, very cool.
With that one, the second grade is, I'll gotta take home a little plant too.
Oh, cute. That is cute.
All right, any questions for Cody? All right, board member report. Uh, Jeff, which is?
Oh, we're gonna have a sports one pretty soon, meeting.
Follow up on the other one?
Okay. Can you let me know when it is?
Yeah, thank you. Oh, that's it?
Danielle?
Um, I don't think I have anything other than the comedy night for football. High school football is April 8th. Tickets are on sale via, there's an event on Facebook, otherwise we will have enough, be having a promotional night for ticket sales, physical tickets, on the 25th. Let me just make sure that's right. Yes, Saturday, the 25th at the Tino. 6:00 p.m.
Darcy?
No report.
Nikki?
Maybe have us back a stop.
I'll try to keep it Reader's Digest version for, um, for sake of what I'm, what I'm about to discuss is really more about planting seeds, not necessarily looking for action at, at tonight, but I've been doing a lot of research over the last several weeks about staff retention. How can we better facilitate the bridge between home and school? We're seeing behavior issues, we're seeing mental health issues, as we all know, the financial issues. And just, everything is escalated. I think we can all speak to that. So, speaking to an article, I don't know if anybody's aware of the K-12 Dive website, pretty awesome. Um, I'm, I find a lot of really great information and updates on there. Um, it's pretty, like as far as who contributes to those websites and those articles, they're pretty astute people that are usually within a curriculum. Teachers, board members, people in, at a state board level, things like that, so it's not like necessarily opinionated. It is evidence-based. So, as we've seen with teacher shortages, um, just in, according to the National Council on Teacher Quality, in 21, 22, 49 states reported special ed shortages. 44 states reported math shortages and 42 reported science shortages, as we know, those are usually typically the biggest parts of shortages when we're seeing staffing issues. And really, this article was discussing or kind of addressing more, the teacher shortage is not just about pay. We can budget and increase pay, but that's not only gonna, that's a short-term fix for a long-term issue. And so really, what we should be looking at is more of a long-term approach and that bonuses and, and increasing pay is not enough unless it's something that is more incentivized. Whether we're also including apprenticeship programs, improving access to educator prep resources. An example is in the Detroit School District, in spring of 21, they gave out an annual $15,000 stipend for exceptional student education teachers, which is basically our special ed circle of people. Five years ago, they had 60 vacancies, pardon me. As of December of 2022, they were down to three. And these were long-term teachers. In 2017, that same district claimed over 300 teacher vacancies. And since there, they increased that teacher pay and increased the, of those apprenticeship program and educator prep resources, as of fall of 2022, they had less than 10 vacancies. So clearly, it's not just about pay, but some of those things that are also helping remedy is, is, um, helping with that. So, the problem with doing some of the research I've been doing is that the COVID money that was slated for schools is running out. I mean, we're gonna run out of that. We can't really, you have to really budget without that in the bank kind of thing. So, another article I read with this, from this website, was that some districts, of course, like especially your rural and smaller school districts like us, might not be able to budget for a salary increase. But maybe we're looking at what an impact of going to a four-day school week would be more for staff retention. So, it's been popular in smaller districts, leading a competitive advantage to attract in and out of state applicants. In 2019, 24 states reported 1,600 schools and districts have swung to a four-day school week. It is growing in popularity, it's getting closer to our area, it is already talked about, being talked about. West of the Mississippi, there seems to be an increase of average per pupil cost, which is also an increase in the average instructional time with policies in our area. We don't know why, but it is. And in Colorado and South Dakota, the cost savings they reported were mainly with transportation, meals, heating and cooling, and decreasing the hourly salaried employees. Oklahoma, they improved standardized test scores due to having more pupil teacher engagement and longer class periods during those four, four-day school weeks. Students currently spend 85 hours less in class with four-day versus five-day, according to the Journal of Education Finance and Policy. Which is interesting to me, how if they're spending less time, their standardized tests are getting high, or getting better scores. Not sure why that could be, if it's just because of the longer class period, or if there's just better work-life balance for teachers to be better in the classroom. That is a possibility. High schoolers use typically what they're seeing, well, here, let me jump to this. So some of the pros, I collaboratively did quite a bit of research on pros and cons. Financially, labor savings with non-salaried staff can add up to, can add up on non-workdays. Utility expenses are variable, pending use of faculty prep, flex work model, activities, et cetera. Educational pros could be offered a five, pardon me, it could be offered that the five-day non-school day is be designated for staff development and in-service students, pardon me, in-servants. Students in IEP population can use this time for better educational enrichment. Most schools practicing in this work model extend or hybrid existing school days to allow for longer class periods, which enhances engagement and enriches curriculum. Athletic pros, less interference with academics, having a non-school day to train and practice. There's pros and cons to that. As far as attendance, there's been a dramatic increase in attendance with student and faculty and staff because they're able to better make arrangements for appointments on non-school days, but they're also getting that break for self-care and more mental health resources are available. Staff retention and decrease in work sick days allows more time for all of that. So the cons for finances, childcare for families needing services to mold into work schedules when they can't be home with kids. Does increase expense at home for meals and non-school days to families. Some ideas on how to remedy that, because I like to be strength-based, solution-based. Seeing what we can offer with kids company on those days, or seeing what kind of childcare opportunities could be on the non-school days. Staff lunch arrangements could be made for at-risk or other families that may need assistance. Maybe community ed is able to offer meal prep, daily living skills and other services and mental health services that could be on those non-school days as well. Extracurriculars, cons, limits on the four-day availability for after-school attendance and participation. That is going to be extensive collaboration with athletics and admin, I think, to see what that would look like, because I don't know what is legal, what's not, I think that would just need to have a lot of research and, and see what works. Family and safety, some families seek refuge during those school days, as we all know. Sometimes we know the kids are being better managed, better cared for when they're in the setting and allowing that ample work time during class to reduce, reduce that workload at home on families and on staff is gonna be a huge possible opportunity to a work model like this. I think home and after-school time would need to further focus more on rest and relaxation and extracurriculars versus homework. Providing ample behavioral health and mental health resources and local outreach to assist families that need education and that is needed. And then, the other part was just kind of a coattail off of that, just some notes. The middle school and high schools in Oklahoma offered mental health services to students on that fifth day in group settings, so they had like Fridays or Mondays, whatever that may be, Mental Health Monday, or whatever you would wanna call that. Teachers can offer two-hour Zoom sessions for students required or optional for additional help that can get on that fifth day. Staff and faculty, once a month, professional development or albeit. Meals offered on that fifth day for at-risk and to help fill in that gap if that's needed. And, high schoolers would have the ability to use that fifth day for internship, work release, community service or other employment and tutoring opportunities. And then, just to segue off that, another thing that I, that has come up in the community is wondering where athletic fees are being allocated. What do we, what are the athletic fees? When's the last time they've been reviewed? They are pretty high. I know some school districts don't have athletic fees at all, but depending, I don't know, I don't know where the finances come from, and so it's just something I'm just asking, I'm not here because I know it all, I'm here because I wanna learn too, and so just, just something to put, a seed to plant on that. And then, talking about the school year. Seeing if starting earlier and ending earlier might be an option to help respite some of that time. Right now, we don't get much of a spring break, I think it was like built into a work model or organizational plan to have it like every other year, whatever that is, where you get a spring break. Just not sure if that's on the table or not to discuss. Starting when athletics start in August, having that first semester end at Christmas, having that second semester end when, at what graduation maybe, or before, before the end of May?
Second semester would end before Memorial Day.
Right.
And so, and it would depend on the way, the amount of time before Memorial Day would be directly a result of how the calendar lays out. Because sometimes when you have those holidays, they fit really nicely and then you can sandwich a week in there pretty easily. And other times, it gets a little more difficult, but that is something that has been talked about a lot by staff too.
Caladonia runs the scheduling.
And would you have to get a waiver from the state to start before any day?
Yep, there's a, a, up, application process, and right now, that application process, I've included in the updates and in my report, and it's open through April 3rd. And that I, I haven't looked at it too much because I haven't, you know, I was waiting, I'm waiting for directions from the board on this. We do have a calendar for this year. We could modify it for, for fiscal year 24, or we could look into it for fiscal year 25.
Caladonia polled their community before they did it, I really like.
Yeah, that's part of the process that you have to do, so I don't know what are all the other steps, but it would be pretty, it'd be kind of tight by April 3rd.
Yeah.
I got a question, are we, do we have a problem with staff retention? Do we have a lot of openings for next year? Do you have a lot of openings next year?
We anticipate a few.
Yeah.
Okay. Same at, all three levels?
And it's not so much the existing staff that have been here for a while, but we're seeing a huge mobility coefficient with new staff. So they take the job and before they get tenured or, you know, early in their career, they're moving on. And so that, and that's really the group that, because Nikki and I have talked about this separately. And that's the group that the four-day week is targeting, is that millennials group that want to, you know, that value their free time and value their, you know, all of those pieces, so.
Nikki, are any schools around our area doing that four-day?
Um, I know, I don't know how recently, but I know like Milwaukee, I was surprised Milwaukee went to it. They almost kind of didn't have a choice, unfortunately, because they have such a high, high risk, I mean, a lot of Title I in that area, and so, um, I know they had to kind of, they got strong-armed into having to do something. So, not having the budgeting required them to have to do that, because COVID money only lasts so long and they didn't have enough of it to go around, so Kansas City has just adopted something similar to that, I, within the last, I mean, within this school year, has started, I don't know that they started it, but if they have approved it. We have, so, there are several schools in South Dakota, I know, I don't know if there's any in Minnesota quite yet.
There are some in Minnesota that have a four-day week, however, those four-day week schools were done. If, if you remember back in education when we had all of the, um, the shakeups that went on, you know, if you were an underperforming school, you had
Oh, yeah.
You know, change your principals and you had to do all this other stuff. Shortly before that, one of the solutions that was put out by the commissioner at that time was going to a four-day, with some schools petitioned to go to a four-day week, and so there were several that dipped. But during that time then, if you were underperforming still, you had that taken away. And the ability to do that, so there still are a few from that day and age that are doing that now, and that is, I, I believe that's part of what they're saying in creative weeks for your community. And kind of going back to that local control piece.
About some of the senior boys had asked, and I had sent it to Jacob, I think in the fall, but the idea of doing Wednesdays online. So they'd be in school the four days, you know, kind of what we did for part of COVID. They really liked the idea of being online and Wednesday to do some of the things you mentioned, like get the extra, you know, support and, or for the, the students that are doing fine, it's a day off, right? And the teachers could work from home or whatever, so that might be a nice, like, alternative, but I don't know, what does admin think? Or have an opinion on four-day working day?
There's, there are a lot of ups, there are a lot of things that we would have to really plan for.
Yeah.
You know, in talking to a couple of people after we were talking, talking in preparation for day, today, it would be really difficult for kids company, because now you're talking about, instead of having, what, 100 kids bath or so, you'd end up having 400. That potentially could, and what are the other daycare?
If they could.
You know, if, if you could get staffing for it. So those, there, there are some of those logistical issues when you lengthen the day for the itty-bitties. It gets to be really long.
Well, you could do like a stipend for teachers to be able to go do that for the day if they want that extra money. Yes. I mean, that could be an option.
Well, you have the piece of, is this, are we doing it as a cost savings? If so, well, if you're gonna have your building open anyway, you could feed everyone anyway, you're really not saving any money.
Talking district office, finance staff, that was one of the things that they said.
Sports practices all day long, you have the middle school, high school, if you're gonna have kids come to be here, you're not saving any money. In fact, it might even be more expensive.
For facilities. Bussing you save, transportation you'd save on and, you know, those type of things, but.
But I mean, little kids going 10-hour days could be a lot.
Well, and.
And, yeah, so I know some of the research I had done, they found even a hybrid model where you're doing like a standard eight-period day on Monday, Tuesday, but then Wednesday, Thursday is periods one through four, and Thursday is periods five through eight. Where you're getting that extended time and you're not necessarily extending the actual school day. So that, it's still, you know, maybe it's a 10-minute longer lunch or whatever, you know, if you're trying to work in a different. Because I agree, I think those little, those little ones, no, they got the wiggles, they need to move. I don't know if I could handle it for 10 hours either.
And the other impact, but when I think of that, is kids company runs through 5:30 on school days. And so, if you, depending on how long you extend the day, would it be worth it to have kids company just for an hour at the end of the day instead of a couple of, you know, I mean, there's all of those impacts that we'd have to look at.
And I think like, what if, what if FCC LA was able to help? Or we have a committee program that is doing a work release for the kids on fifth day? Where they're running Kids' Co., and, you know, maybe it's a discounted that day, or, I don't know how it's funded or what that funding needs to cover, but maybe there's a way to come up with a way to make it easier for parents if we're looking at just a staff retention model, and I think it will also increase enrollment big time.
I mean, we're, we were, we're putting together a survey to send out, right? Yeah. Obviously, it's specific to more facilities things, but we could maybe throw a question on, one or two questions on the survey to the community, you know? Is this something you'd be interested in? Could you, you know, I mean, I've, I've always been a single parent, so having, if, if I would be like screwed if we had a four-day work week and I didn't have someone to cover because I was working, you know, here in Rochester, five days a week, 50 hours a week, so I, I couldn't have done it. As far as saving on transportation, are we contracted for the year or are we contracted per day with the bus company?
It's a multi-year contract.
So they would probably just adjust their contract to not see a ton of savings there anyway.
Well, it, it breaks down by day and by route, and so if we're looking for modification, they've been pretty good about modifying for us.
When does our current contract with them go for renewal?
I think we, either this year or next year, I believe.
So, so where's the impetus behind this? Why are we pushing for this? Is there, what's the problem we're trying to address?
The problem of staff retention.
And, and do we have a, a problem?
The elementary, I think, also.
Elementary said you have a few, but that's pretty much every year, right?
Right, there's typically a retirement or two. And, uh, we've noticed a couple of young staff moving on, uh, as sometimes leaving the profession or, you know, sometimes going to a different school.
And are you having a hard time filling a slot?
Last year, well, it did. Last year, well, it, it depends on the area, the curricular area which you highlighted. We had, for, for three openings, we had roughly thirty applicants for K-four positions. So that was pretty good.
What's the math positions at middle and high school?
Just supposed to, we didn't have any mid-year. But mid-year is always tough. You had.
Still had a middle school, one middle school.
Yeah.
Still has special at opening.
We've had an unusual amount of mid-year turnover.
But as far as the four-year or four-day week, Beth found this, there's eight in the state right now. But there's also a note that as of December twenty-twenty-two, MBE is not approving any new proposals for four-day school week. Might be off the table. They can always change their mind.
Do that?
As they do.
Yeah, they do that quite a bit, so. They have it to pause by now. But it is a growing trend nationwide, so.
And I think the innovative piece to that is where some of these people are finding, I mean, four-day work week to be virtual one day and be home of kids or whatever that may look like. It's pretty appealing.
But don't you think we'd have the teachers that would miss that income too? Like want a full-time job and that income that that offers?
Oh, it is a full-time position. It's just scheduled over. It's like four-ten's as opposed to five-eights.
But the hourly staff would lose the, unless they stayed more four-ten's too, because they still have to be.
Or did childcare.
The, the staff that it would impact hourly would be like crux. So that would be, that would be custodial.
Driver's custodians.
Yeah. Well, custodial would still be your transportation that would impact, you know? They'd be working longer.
You'd be feeding kids if you're running four hundred kids in childcare.
Yeah.
All right, but we still need help.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, well, last to think about. Thank you, Nikki. I, I still, like, is everyone in favor of at least putting it on the question there that we're sending out? Like adding a question, see if people.
It'd be interesting to see what the community is.
Kind of engaging the reaction of the community members.
But I'd like to be transparent in saying that as of right now, Minnesota Department of Education, they're not approving anymore. Just so that the community doesn't get in an uproar.
Yeah.
Get really.
Or get their hopes up.
Very clear.
Okay, anything else to do?
That's it?
Um, I had a couple of updates, not nearly as thoughtful as Nikki. Softball Boosters has a March Madness event on April first at the Sports Hub for a fundraiser, so you can buy spots on the boards. And there'll be other side, uh, rap book going on. April first, decided.
Is there something out right now to pre, pre-put your name or something?
Yeah, so you can buy squares from board members, um, ten bucks a square, and there's three boards. So, and there's a Facebook event for it.
And you have to pay in advance to the board member.
Yeah.
Because if it doesn't.
For me, you had to sit at our two-and-a-half-hour softball meeting.
It was okay, it was good. But I paid for my three spots ahead of time.
At least it's at the hub. I have been slacking on policies, I only updated a couple this month, so you'll see those coming through. Um, I did work with Araya and Brittany to create a fundraising letter to send out to our local businesses, um, related to the new policy that we have. And so I think we sent it out to, how many?
Um, a hundred and one.
Yeah. But, um, so what we put in the letter, rather than like, you know, here's the tiers of fundraising, and if you donate a thousand, you get your name on a plaque, or rather than do that, we kind of worded it like, hey, this is a new opportunity for the community. We're eager to work together with you and hear your ideas. So it's like, you tell us what you'll give us and what you want in return. So then we can kind of get some ideas on, you know, what, what do they really value? Is it their name on something or? And then once we kind of hear back from those businesses, we can create, you know, a model of, of donations to, to go by, so.
And that's the hard thing too, is there's so many areas that are, you know, like, like teen areas that are looking for donations.
Right.
It's so hard and I feel like every week I'm either being asked to donate something or to buy something, which is fine, but people just get so irate, people asking and it's the same people donating and I just, you know, like, feel so bad reaching out and saying, hey, again, hey, again. So I don't know what other communities do or what you experience in other areas that have done, you know, where they have a really one big event a year and they're able to donate or portion it out if the volunteers for every group show, you know, I don't know what it is, but I'm just, like today I was looking at something and I'm like, how can we make this better? And I don't know if that'll help or.
Yeah, there definitely needs to be a coordination between the different boosters programs and then with Araya and the fundraising stuff. Because softball is now splitting off from Lancer Boosters, um, because it's able to self-sustain now. And I think wrestling's separate and.
Football.
Baseball's separate, no, football isn't. That's for youth football. Hockey's separate.
Oh.
But not all, so there's Lancer Booster and then you have all these separate boosters. So I was gonna ask. Band boosters.
The letter went out as just Lancer Boosters?
No boosters. No boosters, just through the school district. So our school district has approved a policy and we're now able to offer sponsorship opportunities. So it was, wasn't tied to boosters, it was.
And then once we put in plans together, you'll have the separate sports go to each of them again?
I mean, all that's what we need to coordinate.
Okay. Yeah. Why, and is there, I'm, I'm learning, why are all the sports separate? Why isn't there one booster? Most schools only have one booster.
I don't think that would work because they all have different, um, college schools and, um, like permissions.
And, and this is not a good answer, but it's a real answer. It was set up that way before I got here. And, and so, and we have, and, and it is a, it is a bit of a nightmare, especially during auditing time. Because we had, how many were there, Araya, like nineteen, twenty-plus? Activity accounts. And some of them have very large balances in them, some of them have very small balances in them, some of them have active advisors, some of them have advisors listed that had retired several years ago. We found this year when we went in. And, and so it was, it was just a mess and auditors were not happy. And, and Araya spent a lot of time tracking down people. Needed to come in and sign off on things and do stuff. I think Beth helped with some of that too. And, um, it, it, yeah, it was kind of a nightmare.
How do we change that? Or do we have three big events a year, one in the spring, one in the fall? You know, like, what do we, what can we do as a community to bring everybody to one place at the same time? And three times a year, you just know that that's the night you're gonna bring your checkbook, you know?
It's like baseball and softball combined this spring for the first time after. And that was great because otherwise they're both doing, you know? Yeah, and it's the same thing that you do, right? So that worked really well and that's the plan going forward.
Volleyball and football both sell the cards and the file.
And that doesn't, I mean, what they need for football is a different one than they need for volleyball. So we're doing more fundraising now to help offset that. But then we're stepping on baseball's toes.
I know why that started. We had a hundred and twelve dollars for football programs.
Okay.
So what are you gonna do?
Yep, that's what you have to do.
You're gonna get cards, you're gonna sell them.
And then as the accounting practices in the state of Minnesota changed, there were changes within the past, I wanna say seven years, but it might be five, to how those had to be documented and what had to be done for accounting for, um, student-related events and all of those things and activity accounts and, because they were finding that lots of student activity accounts were disappearing. Not being accounted for appropriately, so they put in higher.
Well, not the trouble you have when you have so many of them too, there's no accountability.
That's just it.
Actually, Dana's really good about that. She's got it really tight, um, really tight.
Well, but then the separate ones have boards. So like we have boards, we have board meetings, like five-on-one, C three week. So it's. Pay the taxes.
So even though you're five-on-one, C three, you still have to go and pay that. When's your, you know?
Sorry, I didn't mean to hijack your. Yeah, no, that's great. It, we, that is an opportunity for improvement, so if anyone has ideas. Um, and then a reminder that on Memorial Day is the Coach Lumber Bench Dedication. So we do have the honor guard, hopefully is able to come. And then finally, um, we submitted for this grand thing called Pints for a Purpose with Pearl Street Brewery. So every Tuesday throughout the month of April, if you go buy pints, um, a dollar from each pint and three dollars from each growler will go to softball. So you have a reason to go drink pints to do your part to support the community.
Is there a regular Facebook event for that?
Yeah, there are.
Remind you?
Yeah, four to eight, Tuesdays and April.
Where's it placed?
Pearl Street Brewery. It's in the old Lacrosse Butwear Building on St. Andrew Street, it's by Menard. It's, it's every Tuesday in April, in four to eight. They have lovely bartending. Um, it's one dollar per pint and three dollars per growler that they donate to softball. And that was the extent of mine. Okay, we are on to administrative report. High school first.
So that's me. So we got all kinds of stuff going on because we're in the heart of second semester, but then we're also planning for next year as well as all of the end-of-year events. So we got things going on, planning for testing, planning for prom, planning for graduation, planning for, you know, you name it as far as end of the year. We also have all the registration stuff for next year, starting to rework handbooks, code of conduct and everything else. Certainly the groundwork for our opening workshop. So it's kind of, you're having your foot in like four different buckets right now. So there's an awful lot going on. But our student and staff are doing great. Mr. Braun and Caitlin already talked a little bit about the blood drag. That's probably our biggest student event over the last month. Weather impacted that quite a bit. I think we probably would have almost doubled what we had if the weather hadn't impacted that. So that was kind of a big deal, you know, a little bit of disappointment. But they did a great job being flexible and kind of adapting to, you know, what was a constantly evolving situation. So our students deserve a lot of credit for that. Staff, the biggest thing, we had some staff development days. And, you know, just kind of continuing that process of learning, refocusing, getting to kind of where we want to be. There's a really heavy focus on kind of getting back to some of those basics, lesson design basics of how do you respond to students. You know, COVID had a lot of impacts. And some of those techniques that we used pre-COVID don't necessarily work quite as well anymore. So trying to refocus and kind of renew that toolbox a little bit. So that was kind of a big deal. And I did put on here again some of those details, I mean, you got an email about it as well, but some of those details about those big events that are coming up for ACT test, prom and graduation. So they're all in the report for you to read.
Thank you.
All right, Brittany, if you want to scroll down just to the, to the pictures. The main thing I want to highlight is the, we had an opportunity, Jess Whitkins from the Lacrosse and Public Library contacted me several months ago about an opportunity to bring the band, the Reminders. And, and they're a hip-hop band that dances and sings and they've opened for several different famous groups. And we, this is a couple of pictures showing students and staff members, uh, you know, participating actively in his performance and it was, uh, it was quite entertaining. Very positive message, a lot of, um, positive reinforcement of supporting your classmates and recognizing that getting up and being on a stage takes a lot of courage. And it was, uh, I, I kind of polled a number of the, um, my, our toughest critics, they had great boys after it was all said and done, I said, you know, be honest with me, you know, it's, it's okay, you know? Tell me exactly, you know, tell me what you thought of this. And like, yeah, it wasn't bad. And I thought, I'll take that.
That's a win, that's huge. That's a win.
And of course, the fifth and sixth graders thought it was the greatest thing in the world. So, um, yeah, it was just, it was, it was a nice opportunity for us to, to have a, a fun performance like that and to partner with, um, the local library. And it was, I, I certainly appreciate Jess, uh, reaching out to us and offering up that opportunity. So, um, I would expect if we get other opportunities moving forward, that we'll probably take advantage of that.
Was that through grants through the library or how did that all?
I know they were just making a tour, I don't know exactly how the, how that came about, but I know after they left us, they were going to, um, Spring Grow for another performance. So I don't know, um, where the, where the money came from for it, but I know that it didn't, didn't cost us anything and it was, uh, time well spent, so.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Probably some boosters. Legacy funds for the State Library Association. That's awesome.
Thanks, Dash. Jeff?
Yeah, um, get to the good part, you know, class, data, right? So this is way, way too small to see, so, um, just, you're, you're wanting some information about behavior. This is what I share with my staff. So you can see spike in November, but we're definitely trending in the right direction. It helps that February only had twenty-eight days, but we're, we're seeing the impacts of our positive behavior expectations. Staff are also able to see, you know, that the top areas are in the classroom, on the playground and in the hallway. So we can target those with intervention and be proactive. Some good news, I mean, it looks like it's trending down in the green area, but the important thing is our, um, what is this? Math, math. Yep, this is our math score. So if you add the sixty-two plus nineteen, that is eighty-one percent of kids on track, on track to meet or exceed on the, um, or on the MCA. These are our screening results. So each and every student is screened for academics, fall, winter and spring. So this shows that we're trending in the right direction and the blue zone is a good thing. Those are kids that are excelling, green is on track. And then these are our reading results that leave a little bit more to be desired, but if you add them together, they equal seventy-six percent. So if we stopped school today, you'd have to give all of my staff their site goal bonus. But we're gonna keep working, uh, because our spring scores are what we're gonna measure that against.
Jeff, can I ask something?
Absolutely.
And as you're looking at this data, because I know that there hasn't been a lot of data like this presented at the board, I just want to go back to, not only do you look at what we have in the green and the blue here, but you look at how it's trending from the red and the orange. Okay, so we're seeing that where we had seventeen, it went down to seven. And then, so they're moving in the right direction.
Yeah.
And so that, you know, that's always a good one to watch too.
Yeah, you want that nice smiley face trajectory. A rainbow is not a good thing. And of course, the cameo with Eleanor. This is at the greenhouse at WTC, which is, is tucked away right by Sixton Vine, very cool place. And our students in third and second grade, uh, went to field trips. She got a spider plant too, she dug into it, probably ate some dirt, which is why she's feeling so well. But, um, a really neat partnership that's happening with Grow. It used to be Grow Lacrosse, it's now Grow. And, um, they serve a lot of schools in Wisconsin and it's definitely a feather in our cap to have a school garden, to have curricular lessons happening, um, throughout the school year. So kudos to Growls. And that happened during Animal Day, I think. So Mrs., Mrs. Bear and I did a selfie, these kids all photobonded us. So we try to have some fun in addition to learning how to read at this point.
Can we add that he showed up to our ad?
Yes, he did. At the high school.
Yeah.
At the high school. The high school.
It's a good thing he included this picture, otherwise it would have been a less flattering one. If he was in that outfit, it would show up in our reports.
Uh, this is a giant wiggle stool to change the subject. Uh, this is a giant wiggle stool to change the subject. Um, this, this, yeah, this was part of our um flex seating lending library, which was a vision that we had like uh twenty eighteen or nineteen, our PTO was like, hey, could you do something like this? I think Lindsey Shea, I think is a teacher over in La Crosse, said, hey, this is an idea. It's happening. We've got wiggle chairs, we've got fidgets, um, like the sensory path here. Um, just all kinds of innovative ways to, to meet student needs that are happening in this building. So um, thank you to the PTO for their support and um, yeah, we appreciate it.
Showing off the photos of him in that outfit.
It has a tail. They were, they were tugging at my tail. Anyway, let's move on. I forgot about it.
Well.
I don't know how you're gonna follow that.
Well, I'm dressed up as a basketball coach in the bottom. Um, but you know, really just showed up kind of in a t-shirt there. So. Well, I'll start at the bottom then. These uh photos were the best part of my March. Um, we had Little Lancers basketball for four weeks and had a spectacular showing and had some awesome volunteer coaches um that joined us. Um, we had a lot of really great feedback from it. So we're learning a lot from it about more about what this age parents want from, for their kids. So went really well in the, in the gym here. Um, let's see, so Discovery Preschool, um, we had our rescheduled general, general enrollment night. And our team is uh working very hard in planning for next year because currently with the number of registrations we have, um, we are looking to be over this year's capacity. So we've got to figure out how to fit, accommodate all the kids that want to come to Discovery Preschool. Um, Karn and I are working together with Pelley School up at Prince of Peace um to do some more professional development work with some of their staff. And as they work on um trying to increase their staff retention as well and um have a solid program. Cause we need all the, all the preschools and child cares in this community, uh, because we can't hold everybody. So we need to do a weekend to boost um other programs in the community as well. Um, Saturday, March eleventh was a busy day. We had the March Madness indoor garage sale with the junior class officers. Um, they did a great job. It's a fundraiser for them. And uh, we got a lot of compliments. It was the same day as the Omni Center had their indoor garage sale. And we heard from shoppers that ours was more organized and cleaner. So I don't know what that meant for the Omni Center, but we were happy to hear the uh, happy to hear those things. And yeah, then got to see the high schools play Theory of Relativity show. It was wonderful. So kudos to them too.
Thank you.
Yeah, where's your pictures? You're data.
It's muddied snow. Yeah.
All right. So our winter sports season wrapped up a couple of weeks ago now. Your Lancers had a great season in all the sports and will build up to success heading into the spring. Uh, most notably, boys' basketball finished with an eighteen and ten record and a trip to the quarterfinals in Rochester. Girls' basketball finished with a fifteen and twelve record and a trip to the quarterfinals in Rochester as well. Um, boys' hockey finished with an eighteen and eight overall record in a first ever first round bye in the section one A playoffs. Uh, spring sports kicked out their practices this week Monday. The hallways are full of kids stretching out and throwing balls. It's crazy in there right now. Uh, we're looking forward to a great spring season. We held a spring sports meeting last Wednesday, March eighth in the high school cafeteria to introduce the team of coaches and new staff, the parents and student athletes. Uh, we would also went over some general rules and uh had those that needed help registering and get set up. Uh, participation numbers for each specific sport are reflected below. These numbers were as of Friday twelve PM. Um, and I believe, let me scroll the bottom. Yes, so that number now is two hundred and thirty six. So we had, well, actually, excuse me, two hundred and forty. So we had forty three late signups. This week has been crazy, the last few days.
So we accepted late signups?
We did, yes.
At this point, but we're accepting less and less, right? Because I know for football alone.
Football was, the ball was crazy.
Late signups at this fall season. So we're, we're weaning backwards slowly to try and get people to.
And the Friday snowstorm too, there was a lot of people that were gonna come in Friday and take care of their stuff. Got out of school early. I think that affected some things, but yeah, now like two thirty six, which is right on kind of course from last year. Five and ten more, so.
I have a question. So is there a reason softball, like, were you staggering the end dates so that you could keep up or? Cause I noticed um over the weekend, like if I went in, cause I was one of the late signups. Um, so when I went in. But like girls' golf was, you could still find, you could still sign up for baseball, you could still sign up for boys' golf, but you couldn't sign up for softball.
So we, we were opening those as people were calling and emailing. We were going back in and opening those up.
So were all of those supposed to be done on the noon?
Yeah.
Yeah, never mind. Oh, I'll just be over here.
Not sure Danielle said it loud enough, but we should have a late fee.
Yeah, late back. That's a great idea. I think that, yeah, I think people just wait till the last minute, but a late fee would, I think that would do that. Yeah, that would help immensely.
I mean, all the coaching boards, you pay late fees.
Yep.
Yeah.
Administrator costs to.
Absolutely.
Later on.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially if they're trying to make teams, right?
Exactly.
In community ed, we prefer to call those early bird discounts. There you go. I like that.
Take early bird discounts.
Positive framing.
Yeah.
Um, do you want to tell me about the scoreboard?
Yeah, so um, April kind of talked about our fundraising idea. I've had, had some conversations in the last couple of few weeks since um that came out. Some fun conversations, ended up getting the basket, the high school basketball scoreboards paid for completely um by the Sports Hub and Timeout Tavern. Had some great conversations with those guys and um, seems like more and more people stepping up and coming to me and wanting to help out with different things from, I mean locker rooms, weight rooms, name it. So it's been, been kind of a fun project.
And I think that's part of it too, is if we put it out there is this is what your money is going for, and they can physically see what it is.
Yeah.
I think that's a huge draw for people.
Hundred percent.
And having their name on the wall. That's a big deal. That's been a big deal with hockey, just having their names on the boards and on the back fence.
Yeah, we saw in the, the general letter we sent out, it did, one of the paragraphs does list like the things that your money could help support. So we listed, you know, outdoor facilities and listed the outdoor sport. But we also included like robotics practice field. We included uh theater improvements. We included air conditioning in the gymnasium. So we did put like a high level list of things that the money could be put for. Um, pulled from that facilities list. Not everything obviously, but um, and not just athletics, right? They can sponsor other things too. Um, so.
Yeah.
Did you put field turf on there? No, I didn't. Terry, Terry didn't need to help draft the letter. So there's no turf on. One more question then. Do we have um an installation scheduled or getting thought about for those scoreboards and those shot clocks?
Yes, I just got word that they'll be here in July.
How's the community at Hasik going on in the summer?
Okay. Um, Nikki, you had asked like what do activities fees get used for? So, you know, we had this many people sign up. What are those fees for? I assume like um, uniform. So what are the actual activities?
Transportation.
The buses.
Big cost.
Coaches?
Yeah, I think that they were gonna, they're gonna break it down and figure out what all the fees are for and when they've been reassessed. Oh, just because I know there's been some chatter that it is hindering some people from participating because of fees. So. And usually if they talk to the coach that's doing it, like I as a parent would help pay for somebody to have a scholarship of sorts for services. And if they get free introduced meals, they get free.
Right.
So we just need to be more advocating for these, these families that don't know that that's even an option.
Right, which is why I brought it up. Yeah.
But I would be more than willing as we have to help another parent.
Qualified for educational benefits to him and to all the people.
Exactly.
And we want them to.
Right, so that's part of what we've talked about. I shared this with Nikki and I've shared it with administrators. I would have liked to have done a table, you know, these are all the benefits you get from this or this is, and make it a very positive experience. I did bring forms to the food shelf and food shelf was helping us get additional people who need, needed their help to fill them out if they have kids in school. Um, but it's just networking with those groups and making sure that we, we can get to everyone who's done the very positive stand. And so we'll be working on that for registration for next year. Cause you have to do that every year. Um, however, Brittany informed me of something earlier today. You know, have you helped me talk about this? My understanding from what you told me is that Governor Walz signed the bill for free meals for all. And so that's, that's a huge piece. I'm thinking we're still, I, I don't know where that's gonna go to talk to them, that you still will have to fill out the free introduced forms or the educational benefits forms, but we don't know. It's all kind of up in the air right now. Um, where that can, it's gonna be great for individuals, but where that impacts districts is like when Jacob said, we want them to fill out those forms. That's because that's where compensatory money is derived from. And so now it's trying to figure out what's the compensatory formula gonna be.
Yeah, there's two or three other ways to be able to determine that. So if we can look at that just so we're ahead for next year, that's huge.
Yeah, and our free introduced rate did go from like sixteen to twenty five percent. It hasn't been over twenty percent in my time here. So I mean, more people are applying and I do list the things that it goes towards also like ACT fees, athletic fees.
Yeah, the more information they have on that, the better off. Just curious, Brittany, I don't know if you might know, is that something that can be out with the mailers, the welcome letters, the?
It does go on the back.
It does. Is a self-addressed stamped envelope in there for a return?
No.
That may increase.
And you can also do, honestly, most people do it online on Infinite Campus because then they don't have to see anyone.
Yep.
And anyone, their info information, one person they know gets it, so.
And I would help volunteer, I know Mindy and I talked about this, setting up a station for those that don't have access to electronics or don't have the literacy. And I mean that in a positive way. I don't know how to say that positively, but might not have the.
Computer savvy.
Computer, yeah. And when we have new students starting to. Yep.
I just, I hope there's never a situation where a student wants to participate in something and can't because of a cost or something. So whether it's sports or like we got the sixth grade ego block field trip thing, right? And there's a fifty dollar fee that students pay. And then there's a note in there, right? Like you can, like I could pay for another student. But I actually sent them an email back, Mr. Lurkey, and said, hey, have you heard of the District Three Hundred Foundation Apple Grant? Because this aligns with their mission and that, you know, then, you know, you could submit the grant for that and then the kid, you know. I don't know. Whatever we can do to find funding to help.
I think so too. And I, you know, does the per pupil cost that, or I should say, the stipend that we get, is that supposed to be including that or can we petition to include that?
The, I don't know, PPU that we get for the state, that covers everything. So it doesn't real, it isn't specific to that. Those are extras that we offer.
Got it.
So, you know, we can gener, we do generate funds through McKinney Bento for students who are suffering from homelessness, et cetera. And so that is another area where we could get funding to make sure the kids can do all of the things they can.
Sure.
Oh, I don't know that.
I can find out if you want to include it in.
I mean, even things like, you know, a basketball player, right? Like I, my kids have no interest in football anymore. But I'm glad we pay for some kid to play football that wants to play football. And so, you know, create ideas like that. I think whatever we can do so they can play, they can be in a play, they can do a robotics thing. Like cost shouldn't be a factor for people. We can get enough of that in the real world, right? Should, should just be kids and do all the kids things.
Okay, on that note. My agenda. All right. If you refresh, you'll be able to get my report up there.
I went to my notes, sorry.
Oh, okay. She taught me how to link documents in there and turn the colors today. So I, I feel pretty proud of myself that I knew how to do that now. I am the one that isn't computer savvy on all of these things. So. Basically, I'll, I'll keep going to that. Um, I'll, I'll just talk until she gets that up there. Um, so what you're gonna find and what I linked into the board report is, okay, there we go. Um, put in some stuff. There is, so I shared with um with Darcy and with April, some of the things that we're seeing in vandalism in school right now. And so I wanted to put that up here. One of the things that the board has asked is, you know, don't just do wonderful rosy reports. Be real with us, okay? And let us know what's really happening. And so um, what's really happening with the vandalism is, and we'll go into the picture deck for this. We have students who are destroying things in bathrooms and locker rooms and getting in there. Um, doors are being propped. We've issued a directive to staff that they are not to allow the doors to be propped, but the doors are being propped still. And there was some more destruction that happened today. That Pat sent me, an exit sign was totally punched out. All the internal and the, the lights and everything were pulled out. Um, can you open up the pictures? Yeah. So if we look through here, um, you can, you can see kind of what's happened with some of these signs. And what's happened with some of the doors. So bathroom doors being torn off the stalls. There was a bathroom door in here as you look through it that um, not only was it torn down from the stall, but it was, the front and back were separated. So it was pulled completely apart. Um, principals can probably speak to this. When building administrators are having parents come in then, when, when and if we do catch who the kid is, what we're hearing a lot of is that wasn't my kid. And you can't prove that's my kid. Um, if you find one of the bathroom doors, a blue bathroom door, can you see it?
I'm working on it.
Okay. Um, I asked Pat to give me an estimate and that's why I said over five hundred dollars in my report just for one bathroom stall door that we ordered. It cost the district, I think it was like five hundred and twenty five dollars just to have it delivered. And that doesn't count what it costs in custodial time if they can repair the stuff or if we have to have someone from electrical come in and do that. Um, I heard rumors and Jacob might be able to answer this, but um, back in our time, I doors on the bathroom stalls in the boys' room.
Some of them, yeah.
Is that against the law now? Well, I, I had a report from a parent that said that, because we were talking about that and they said, yeah, my son said I, I couldn't go potty in the bathroom because there wasn't a door there. I wasn't gonna sit in. My, my next suggestion is can we send a superintendent letter home with that picture, letting all parents know in our district? I mean, I know they all want us to spend money on great things, but so they're all aware of this. And can you help us at the home level?
When we identify the student that has done it, if we can, are they being issued a ticket?
Right, and I would also.
Right, and I would also put in that letter that we are going to involve police.
To answer your question, when we can, um like we had an incident of vandalism in the hallway where we have cameras. We were able to clearly identify the the culprit and um.
And it just takes a couple of those to kind of like, ooh, double.
And so, yeah, there was not only consequences, but also, you know, monetary compensation to cover the cost of the damaged item. So yes, in that situation, uh in the locker rooms, it's, you know, no cameras, no loans.
Do we get the police involved?
Really, I mean, in this, the situation I'm talking about was a twenty-five dollar deal. Um so, you know, I think um the statement that was made to the student was that, and the parents, was that if we have another act of vandalism by this particular student, then the law enforcement will be involved. So, yeah, we don't hesitate to do that. Uh one of the things that um uh done at the middle school um should be in place by tomorrow um is we're relocating the, one of the the middle school PE teachers' office into the middle school locker room, coach's office, um where it's been previously located between the resting room and the weight room. Down the hallway and around the corner from where the locker rooms are. Um and now, uh Mr. Cole's office will be located inside the boys' locker room. So there will be direct supervision. And until we get um, you know, a a grasp on appropriate behavior.
There we go.
We're we're kind of going uh a little bit um grade school, um that we're, you're in there, everybody gets changed, everybody lines up at the door. And when everybody's done, then we walk down to the gym together. I mean, it's really bare bones, but um, you know, we can't have things like this happening, you know, and um you know, that's that's in the fine arts, uh boys' locker or boys' bathroom. The one before that with the door was in the the middle school boys', that one, middle school boys' locker.
It's middle school, boy?
If it's my kid, you, I better hear from you personally. But in a, on a serious note, I I think these situations are, it's great to punish, but you're not bringing, we need strength-based approach.
We do, we need to pride in our facilities and really.
Yeah, like, I'm just, I mean, even if it's, okay, we're gonna teach them how to repair that door. You know, I mean, they're in there with maintenance and now look what they just, look what they just did and the impact they just made on what. I mean, I don't know, maybe it's.
Maybe it's a little wide assembly with police officers explaining how it is against the law.
Well, and I think it's, this is based on the way you told me, it's a pretty small portion where it's, you know, seventh, maybe eighth grade, middle school boys. I mean, it's a pretty limited group because we know where it's happening, when it's happening, roughly.
So we can narrow it down.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a wide, this is happening to every grade level, every spot in their building. I would say overall, based on somebody's been in schools for two decades, there's been very little vandalism this year. Building-wise. It's just popped up recently. It's been a huge spike just with that one little segment.
I mean, I think, I mean, parents need to know about this. Like, when you showed me, I'm like, put it on the board agenda. We're gonna show the community and people need to know what's happening in the school because the next op, the next item on the agenda is getting new furniture for the media area. And I'm like, if they're gonna treat it like they treat the rest of the school, like, why, why, like?
Well, I think they also know that there's no, there's, there's no cameras, no cameras in there, you know, so it's.
You could hear that though, right? Like, are there, is there nobody?
Can't there be cameras pointed at the entrance? So you could narrow it down to, you know, what happened between fourth and fifth period and these are the people that were in the bathroom and then calling in and interviewing.
And so like with the locker room solution with him being in there, he can check those bathrooms and make sure each hour, so he would be able to narrow down at least where that's where that happened. Now, you know, if we can get someone that looks, you know, I know I've had to do this at other schools and we just have routes of where people had to check, you know, so. Part of my responsibility before my prep time is I'd be wanting to check the girl, this girl's locker room or, you know, whatever happened to be a make sure. At, actually in Red Lake, we went, we got to the point where we had to lock bathrooms. And then you had to have someone to escort you down and unlock it.
That's the locker room, that's middle school boys' locker.
I think we have hall monitors when I was in high school. Have hall monitors like trapped outside, I mean, during classes. You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. And and just with staffing issues, that might be, you know.
No, kids do it. So seniors, seniors sit in the hallway.
Okay.
Like, so they're studying.
Got it.
Used to be wrestlers. They'd sit in the hallway. And then, like, if you had worked back during a class or something, you had to have a hall pass. And then when you walked past the wrestlers, they'd be like, you have a hall pass. You'd have to show them your hall pass and if not, they'd escort you down to the office or tell you to go back to class. But they could hear stuff happening in the bathrooms that they were, because, you know, there was literally like one set on each side of the hall and then you couldn't go down that hall without showing them your pass. There's cameras in there just.
You know, and so just making awareness, I like the ideas, definitely a letter, I think, going out to families. I hadn't thought about that, but that would be a great, you know.
Is it pictures?
With pictures, yes.
Is it considered public shaming if we're not naming people but sharing pictures online, like on Facebook, saying, would that be considered? Would that be anything?
No, I mean, it's, I mean, it's construction public property.
Our taxes pay for that and we can't.
Cause I think that there's enough chatter about that.
I would uh perhaps recommend um shutting the comment section off just because there are kids that have opinions of who they think did it and or accusing people and might tell their, if they're not on Facebook, they might tell their parents who might feel entitled to share names and such. On our district page, which would then make us, I won't do that.
So would we, could we be opening a cam then if we're having the monitor?
Brittany has a great comment.
Pardon me?
I was just saying it would not make our district hearing arguable. We're like new enrollment, staff, hiring, if I saw that, I would not wanna help work here or make it there.
But if we do it to just current. Yeah, I like the letter, I like the letter idea, direct mail.
I think direct mail would be better.
Do you still have?
Or even in mail?
Or did I read that that went away?
We do. It's a little different than the sit in a random room at the high school.
What is, what is it now?
It's with the teacher who is having that, he would do.
We run a lot more um noon and recess tensions now than in the after.
Have we ever thought about doing kind of what she said instead of just saying, here, sit in this room for an hour, like making them help exit?
We do a lot of restarting. There's someone who was throwing food, they help clean up in the cafeteria, they have someone to throw down walls, they can help students. We never started a piece that's big.
And somehow praised for, for it, of like, not, and somehow to get recognition in a positive way, you know what I mean? Like, not necessarily rewarded for the punishment, but for the corrective action, just like, I don't know, anyway.
But they tried to make amends.
Yes.
Okay, so um going, just really quickly going back to my report, um I covered a little bit of the possible um mid-August school starter, four-day week that Nikki and I talked about in there. I talked about a Capitol visit on Monday. I'm heading to the Capitol. I'm working on lining up um and I I've got one confirmation for sure and two potentials with our local legislators so that I can meet them and get in front of their face. I've done a lot of lobbying at the Capitol previously. And so just making sure they know who we are and what we do and getting some things out there. Again, on the make sure you know what's going on, uh just highlighted three parent contacts, um so you know kind of what's happening here. Um I've had some parent contacts and there were a couple of them. This wasn't just one. Um regarding the number of weather impacted days that have happened to date this year and how that impacts young families. And that they were concerned about that and wondering how we do things and what we do. So I sent out again basically what I've sent to you guys about the wild days and how decisions are made and that it's multiple people and that, you know, the the last one for sure, the state, one of the parents made a statement, well, nobody else did this in the area. And actually, everyone pretty much in the area did end up closing, so, or doing uh early release. Um we had um parents almost monthly concerns about how their students are treated, whether it's friend-to-friend stuff or, you know, and I moved that back to the principals and they do a great job, but everyone likes to let the superintendent know what's going on in that area too. And probably the one that was most um, that was most stressful for staff here is in the process of doing some um work with a student and a family, um a parent got incredibly aggressive with our staff and um nearly to the point where I needed to do a no trespass with the person. So just as a board, I just want you to know that if if that continues, I won't allow the staff to be harassed and to um be put in a spot where they're afraid to be in a room or afraid to do their job with the parent there. So um I will, you know, I will continue to take action on it. Luckily, we were able to find an alternative path, so I didn't have to do the no trespass. But we're set with that. Um and then just a full list of things in here too about um upcoming events. I tr- I actually went through the end of April in prom so that board can schedule out. I know things get busy. Um and then again, minis- the lunch ben- uh lunch accounts, so you can see the negative balances as of three, six that are there. In addition to that, we showed the vandalism. I have one more thing that's a highlighted picture in the board report. And so if you can pull up the design presentation. Oh, and I, yeah, I should show that one too. Forgot about that. So, oh, after, so when Darcy and I were at the leadership conference and we were touring through the vendors, we came upon some people that had some furnishings that we, that really kind of encompassed what I was thinking the board was asking for for the library and for redoing that space in the high school library. And so we started talking with this vendor and had had, and subsequently had a few meetings and there's been some measurements taken and so. Brittany, if you just scroll through, basically she went through and she looked at the media center and designed different areas and what that would look like. And what I asked her to do, you can just do, going down, these are some of the things. So in the highlighted green area, these are the featured pieces that she would be looking at putting in there and you'll see the budget price for the furniture only. So it would be a little higher than that when you get shipping and installation and that kind of thing, but that's a furniture price. And so I just wanted the board to have some concept of what we could do and what those costs would be. Um so if we roll down again, this chair we were talking about, there would be no casters on this chair. Okay, this would be a fixed, a fixed chair because.
Only the elementary students have.
Well, there there can be casters on other chairs, but this would be a really cool recliner racing type chair, not always. So if you go down, um this is a really cool banquet seating area. Um and I don't know.
So that would be on the wall where all the class pictures are now?
And it has um outlets and plugins on the base of it, so the kids can charge right there. Um the fabric can be anything we want. Um but like April, I said, I call it nursing home furnishing, furniture covering. Or something like vinyl or plastic that you can wipe off, you know? This is the center consoles and these are really cool. And then there would be a stand-up height table around the back with stools that could be put around that for work areas. These are some other, these are some of the pieces that could be in there. Um we vetoed the um table with the, originally she had suggested write-on wipe-off tabletop. But we vetoed that because we don't wanna encourage kids to write on furniture.
Smart.
You know, um although I've, I've seen them and used them in other areas and and they're really cool. Huh?
It's an adult.
Yes, yes. Um and if we go down a little further, these are some of the other pieces. Um the lecture and the, so this would be an area where we can use tables like this when we're looking at designs similar to this.
So this is where we'd have the board meeting back then and that, so we configure the tables. And then that would be a podium where public speakers could actually stand and not have to be awkwardly in the middle of horseshoe.
Okay, and then this is kind of the area by the windows. And so where you see the walls that would, you know, picture your windows back there and kind of arrangements there.
Love it.
Okay. This little back area, that's kind of where the tech area is right now, so that wouldn't be wasted space, you know, have some of the wiggle seats and the tables adjustable height, those those wiggle seats will adjust height so that you, if you're standing and you just wanna lean against something, like you lean against a wall, you could lean against that and it would be a wiggle seat support. So in that area behind the stacks, she would put two of these bench, or three of the bench seedings, there's two of one kind, one of the other that would go through and then a few of those little free tables. So if people wanted to be back there in a little quieter space and working, they could. She proposed this for the circulation desk. I don't think we're gonna change out the circulation desk. It's in fine shape right now. Uh we will also keep all the stacks because those are in good shape too. There's no reason to change them. We could just move them. And then she had talked about if we wanted to do like a printer station right there where we have little cubbies currently. So the kids could access and print documents from there or community could if they come in. And that's, so it's a lot of mobile furniture and it's a lot of pieces that can be moved and and reconfigured to what we wanted. Because as we talked, board had said that they would like to allow community to use that space for things or if they're, you know, if boosters wanted to meet there, or if another group wanted to meet there, then that facilitates that happening.
I see the wiggle chairs. Is there also, or is this, it could be classroom specific and I just don't know, but is there sensory board area for?
It's classroom specifically, it's sensory things, yes.
Yeah.
Um it isn't worked in, well, the other thing that's worked in there is one of those chairs is a rocking wiggle chair, you know, so those nice recliner chairs. There's a pivot on the base and then some are static because she talked about different sensory needs and that, you know, some people don't like that wiggle and other people do need that.
We have to just throw in some uh like beanbag for the wiggle area, like beanbags too, again in leather. Um and then the video chair rocker thing that sit on the ground, you know? But you're having some focus groups look at it, right?
And so what the next steps for this are, would be, um I wanna, I've already talked to Jacob and um I'd like to get some of the groups of students to come in. So student advisory, we're scheduled, we're scheduled to meet with them for a little bit. Um I've also talked to Anita and I'd like to get some of the kids who are maybe not the kids that are in student advisory but would be engaged. And and maybe, you know, are less engaged students, you know, some of our kids that are disenfranchised. Da, 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 disenfranchised or disengaged. What kind of a space would you like to come to? And how would you like to work? And maybe that helps us if, you know, if we arrange this correctly and we can get, you know, I would be willing to spend, you know, I work till five, six, seven o'clock at night, many nights. If I could move my computer over there and just sit at the library desk, I'd sit there and let the thing be open so that we could have kids that would do their homework, et cetera, in there, like an after-school study hall. I'm sure we would have other people that would be willing to do things like that because we do have kids that don't, not many that don't have internet or don't have access to those things, but there are a few.
I'm definitely like, we need to repaint it, like fresh, take all the old pictures of old graduate, um and then get like the. and then get like the art room to do cool stuff and.
Yep. And I've done, you know.
And ship laugh a lot.
There you go.
Like us coming in on Saturday.
You know, and in other, in other districts, I've had kids design murals. You know, and, and, you know, you can have the murals done and things. So it reflects who our students are.
Should do something like they did here with that.
Yes, with the mosaic.
It's so pretty.
You know, like after a few years, you can take it down. Right. And I know what we started doing, because originally up north, we had the paint right on the walls. But then we started having problems with custodians that year after year when you had to like trim around or trim paint around them, it was a problem. And so the old ones, we started taking pictures of and then mounting them on large pieces of like the plastic board or the foam board that we'd get up, and so we'd send it to a printer and we'd have that. And then we could take it down when we had to paint it. And so if, if students designed something that was, you know, this size and they wanted it bigger, we could always do that with it and then it would be more portable like this. So just kind of just let people's imaginations, you know, and have it be a reflection of our students.
Beth could have like a community at class where people could design something for it, so that the community has some artwork in there.
Yep, and that's part of the other, that's part of the kind of stakeholder groups and this, too, is I need to get together with a few community groups and maybe Beth, if you can connect me up with some of the other groups we work with and maybe that tech medical society, we should be meeting with them fairly soon. You know, what would you, what would you guys like to see in a school if you wanted to use this space? Because I don't know how much meeting space churches have in the area or, you know, or just other things. So that's, that's kind of where that's going. Sorry about the long report, but.
Do you need a certain answer from us on Fitzgerald?
Yeah, well Fitzgerald, yes, would you like me to get a showing? And do some work on that or not? Fitzgerald is out there right now for, I think it's three hundred and sixty-five thousand is what it's priced at right now.
So I've had people in the community ask if the school looked at that building and for the land though.
Yes.
Because obviously, it would, it's not usable as a building. But that's a lot, that's a big piece of land in the middle of town that we could potentially grow and expand.
Yes.
And use for a lot, even if we sit on it for a while. So I guess my opinion would be to continue to pursue it and see. I completely agree. We don't have a lot of opportunity.
Right.
Kind of landlocked, so if we can get that land, yeah.
Yep, it's a one point seven acre in-town lot. It does have, it does have a swale in the center of it. So where the Fitzgerald Center itself sits right now is flat and then it swells down and then there's another flat spot underneath it. But it's still very, very useful. So I reckon we should put it on the community survey.
Well, I don't think.
Movement on what you're already doing.
Yeah, you're not asking, we should buy it right now.
No, no. Do you want me to look into it and get you more information on it?
Yeah, I would say, yeah. When is that survey slated to go out?
I'm, what's that? Yeah, I'm hoping that we'll get it out by the end of March. That's what I'm hoping for. And I'm trying, I'm, I'm going through and I want to talk to Beth a little bit about it, too, and if you guys have any ideas. We've talked about that just putting things out on Facebook, et cetera, makes it difficult for people. We could put it in the paper with a QR code, that people could answer it on their phones. And that would be another way to approach it. But I'm not really sure how to, you know, because to put a huge survey in the paper is going to cost a fortune and they won't want to do it. But could we, you know, could we have them available in certain spots? Or how do we, do we have a senior population we could, you know, or a population center that we could email to? Because what I'm worried about are the seniors who, or the people who are in that, my age group or a little older, that maybe don't use.
Could we go over to the senior dining center and say, how are you guys getting your information?
What do you most? That's the idea.
Or slip one in the meals and yield bag, milk and yield bag.
Oh, that's a good idea.
I don't think it takes very long. I feel like the person I talked to the other day said, it takes them like forty-five minutes to do it. So there, I don't know that we'll get a huge.
But it's one more, one more touch point, yep.
But maybe still go to.
Yeah, to go to the.
In addition, yeah. Or in addition, too.
Yep.
So having a survey option available online and in paper, is that going to eliminate those that may try to complete multiple surveys to get favorable results based on their narrative? Do you see what I mean?
Yeah, I know what you mean.
Is there a way to filter it?
I don't know there's a way.
You could do the email, if you do the Google form, you could do the email address at the beginning and they have to use that.
Right. And they can't, and then you have it so it won't let them repeat.
Right, because there's multiple, people might have multiple emails.
I don't know how we do that. We're going to have some multiples, I just think we have to figure that in.
The downside of waiting for the survey to go out, about Fitzgerald Center is it's going to sell and we're going to lose the land. So we could, you know, pose it as, like, if we continue to pursue it and it's got a land, what would you like to see it used for? As opposed to, should we buy the Fitzgerald Center? Because that, I think, is two different, two very different things and one, we don't have time to get there and not, because we're going to lose it. We really feel strong.
Okay, I think I have direction now, so I can take care of that. All right, you ready to move on? Yep? Okay, budget update. And I am sorry, I had met with Julie today, she was here, I did not remind her to come to the meeting. So I will own that, that's, I didn't even think about it when we were meeting. That's part of the reason she picked Wednesdays to be here, so.
Did the finance committee pick times to start meeting?
Finance, finance committee postponed their meeting for that day because people were ill. And so I'm still waiting to step that up.
Any questions on budget? All right, people enrollment? Any questions, comments on that? Okay, going student behavior. I saw you added bullying reports and Greg's not even here, so appreciate that.
Clarification that that's, anytime a formal incident is reported, not necessarily that it is found to be.
Correct. Misreceived or.
Yep, correct. Yep.
And so what Jeff showed you was the data about where the incidents happen, et cetera. Eventually, that's what we want to grow this board report to more fully, is that these are the things we're seeing, not just number of incidents, but do a little deeper dive. But we're just, we're not quite there yet.
Are any of these correlated with the vandalism that we saw?
I think so far we've only caught that one, with the vandalism.
Who was the second grade zero? Yeah, Ben, Ben Feldman is a nice leader. Not joking, he's wonderful.
Okay, superintendent evaluation.
Do you guys want to do me a favor? Each of you take a stack and just give one of you. And then if Darcy gets something, she can take it with you. And you start on that side and way around this place, so. I got Jeff's.
You already got it.
You are the non-board members, too.
Thank you.
What's that?
Non-board members, too.
Yeah, that's fine.
The gallery as well?
Yep.
Yep.
I didn't know this was probably something we were supposed to grab away in.
No. Just grab it, they printed them.
Oh, got it, got it. Oh, my gosh, more stuff again.
Snake, I know that is a great snake.
So this month, Mindy and I have been working on the superintendent goals and standards in which we will base her evaluation off of. Because the goals and standards weren't officially stated in the July-August timeframe. Ideally, MSBA's timeline is the goals and standards are formed in July and August. You do a mid-year review around December and then end of the year formal review, evaluation. So we're kind of working on a short timeline here because we haven't done one as a board in a very long time. We're going to do like a, a little quick trial run here to get things rolling so that we can start next year off on the right page. Mindy did some great work and she sent a survey to different staff members, administration, teachers, custodians, and asked for input. So I took that and put it into this table right here, where you'll see the standard on the left and the element. And then this is how many times that the staff reported that they wanted to see it as a goal, either a short term or a long term. And then on the right, it's what, how many times they reported that they've actually already seen progress on that or that they think it's an area that's going well. So we looked at that and we took the standard and element that was reported the most, which was student discipline on the back of that page. And we put that into one of her goals that we want to make one of these fast goals. April, Eric and I had talked about a couple of other goals. We got input from Mindy, one of them that we've all talked about is the strategic plan, updating that and having that ready to go. So these are just kind of the goals that we're working on, that we would like to have finalized soon. And Mindy can talk a little bit more about that process, coming up with the evidence of performance so that we all are evaluating her on a fair scale.
So just as an example of things that I would pull, so when you portfolio for goals and standards and we do it in teacher evaluations, we do it in other areas, you can create a portfolio to show, this is what I'm doing and this is how I'm demonstrating that I'm meeting these standards. And so just for that top one, I pulled an example to show the board. And it'll take me a while to go back to July one and before that and start bringing in those evidence of performance from then. But this would be one example. So we're talking about strategic planning and I've been talking about it a lot. So I'll go through and I'll talk about kind of the training and the stuff I've done and all that before. But this is one that I just did this week. So I sat down with Jen Gephardt, who is one of our consultants that we work with, and we put together an RFP for groups to do a proposal to work with the Crescent Hoka School Board and the district and the community to create our strategic plan or to write our strategic plan for the next five years, okay? So far, I've had, I had one call today from a group that would like to do it. I had another person talk to me yesterday and I spoke into MSBA and they've gotten, they've got a proposal for us, too. So if you look through this, it just kind of talks about what the scope is. And if you scroll down, Brittany, what's the timeline? It's going to be between April and like July. But if it finishes in July, that's fine, I just want a finished document for the August timeframe so that we can then base what our training is for new staff off of that. If you go back up a little bit more, just on number two, you can, a little more. You can start seeing what we want included in the proposal. This is on our websites, if you want to look at it in depth, I don't want to take too much time. But I went through and I said, these are some things, I shared it with April and we talked about things like, what are, ba-da-ba, specific criteria for success? You know, what does our specific criteria, success criteria look like for accomplishing a goal? So they'll help us write those action plans afterwards. And what is that, you know, what do we decide as a team that this is going to look like? And so that will involve engagement groups from everywhere. In speaking to MSBA and telling the rest of the groups, I would like to get this started with students here right now so that we get students and staff input between now and the end of this four-year. And so that would be meeting with focus groups there and getting some of that input so that we can use that. Caitlin, that's where you as a board member and as an active member of the student body, I'll be asking you to pull together some, and get some ideas. How do we want to do this? Where do, you know, what would be the best way to get their input? See, I had to make it blush, everyone made Mr. Cop blush, so I had to try someone on the other side of the table. So if you want to take a look at this, if you have any ideas, but, so this will be moving forward. You're lucky, you didn't have to wear a bear suit. And so just review that. So that would be one of the evidence of performance. This is, this is demonstrating that I'm working on this. And then I talked to April, do you want to talk about this?
So just for the board's awareness, I did inquire with past and current veteran board members on past superintendent evaluations, what was the process, what questions were used? And there, there were none. So, you know, we're, we should be doing this, they should have been done, so we need to start doing them. So there's, we're starting with just the three goals that, Darcy, you put together, worked with Mindy, they agreed on the three goals for now. You'll be getting this email.
Yep.
And Mindy will email it to you. Please send me your responses before the next board meeting. So you'll have thirty days to complete three questions. I'll then anonymize the data and at the, so not at the next board meeting because I'll just be getting the data back, but then by the next one then, we'll have a high-level summary of the feedback from the board and then things that are going well and then things to continue to work on. So that will be the main thing, that's right. She mouthed, I couldn't think of what my fill was. So any concerns with that approach?
No, do we know the last time a eval was done? Because I'm just, with the respect of, more, more than eight years ago, really?
Yeah.
Because I could see when you have interns filling in, you can't really evaluate someone that's.
Right, but what I was told is that he never had one.
Yeah, that's.
The entire time he was here, so.
So a lucky him. Because we were doing the accelerated schedule, to be fair to Mindy, we tried to pick goals that were, you know, important, but.
Measurable.
Yeah. In a short amount of time.
Good job.
And they're, they're not too much of a burden, are they?
They're, these are all areas that I've worked around for, I think. And that was what, that was what Darcy asked me at the last meeting. So I'll be harvesting data from what I've done and then, and putting it in there. And that's, so the blue sheet that you have, the sheet with the blue lines on it, that's what you'll get in digital format, so you can type into it and then forward it to April and that's what she'll use to go through. And prior to that, I should, I'll try and get you as quickly as I can, some of the evidence that I have, you know, have the evidence I've done, pulled together. But really, what that form is designed for is like it says on there, speak to what you know. But really what that form is designed for is like it says on there, speak to what you know. So if you were at a facilities meeting that I was at, that might be the facilities thing. If you heard me preaching about, uh, strategic developments at the board table and saying, we need to do this, um, that would be evidence of that. And so the top three areas are the evidence and then the bottom box is kind of your thoughts. So, because sometimes you might not know evidence, but you might have a feeling. And so the way MSBA writes this up is that they want you to be able to represent in both areas.
Sure.
And so that's just, that's legitimately one of their forms from the manual that I just typed in what the goals are. The other thing I just wanted to add was, you know, keep these sheets or we do have it digitally so we can send them out again. But in July, when we start looking at new goals, we definitely want to go, um, off of staff input. So I, I'm sure we'll come up with a plan of how often you'll send out those surveys. But for right now, this is a great amount of data for what they think is going well and what we do need help on. And I, um, staff retention was on here as an area that they thought they needed some help in, so. But, you know, he was asking, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and a big shout out from my end because I wasn't the one that handed those out to staff. I asked Nicole Greener at the high school. I asked, um, John Stefis at the elementary school and I just gave them a packet of evals, the same number in each one. And I just said, choose people. I don't want to know, have them turned in to Brittany afterwards. And we have the originals, but I wanted to be as out of that as possible so that everyone. And then I did send a copy to everyone on the admin team because they were, you know, closely working on a daily basis, so. But I think that three sixty feedback is important.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions or comments? Thanks, Darcy, for working on that.
Yeah. Long overdue.
Okay, up next, we have the Narcan policy and procedure.
All right. So I think it was a couple of months ago now, not the last board meeting, but the board meeting before that, that I believe Mindy introduced this topic. I was not able to be at that board meeting with, um, and then attached to that meeting, I believe we had the program that I put together, the ISG three hundred, the naloxone program. So I think you guys all had plenty of time to look that over and, um, we can discuss it, you know, tonight if you want. But, um, and then also another thing I've been working on has been a standing order to go along with that program, which is required for my license to be able to administer naloxone. We choose to have that at the school. So, um, for those of you that aren't aware, so naloxone or Narcan is the, um, naloxone is a generic name. So that is an opiate antagonist. So if there was an overdose at school, we would be able to administer that and reverse that. The effects like the respiratory depression, things like that. So, um, I'm all about being, you know, proactive versus reactive. And I know Nikki, we've had some discussions about this and like, do we really need it? Cause EMS usually gets there pretty quick. But, um, you know, just from my standpoint, three minutes is a long time to wait when somebody's not breathing. And, you know, we have limited resources here. So if there's anything we can do to, um, you know, improve that individual's outcomes, whether it's a student, staff, visitor, whoever, um, I feel like we should take advantage of that. Especially with the medication that has very little risk involved. There's not many side effects, if any. So that is kind of my stance on it. Like I said, I put together the program. So, um, I just kind of pieced together, you know, resources that I pulled from other nurses in the states and then, um, was just kind of winging it as, you know, just trying to do this all individually. But then luckily MSBA came out with that policy, uh, model policy. It's not, I don't, don't think it's an official one, but we, we could, um, decide to adopt that policy. So that's five sixteen point five. I don't know if, um, you guys all had a chance to look at, over that model policy and all. And I did, we didn't attach it, but it's something we can attach in the future too. Just know that it's out there and that's something that I would hope we could adopt and we can talk about that further. The other two things are the statutes that are surrounding, um, the opioid antagonist and administering that just in regards to, um, my license. So basically there's the Good Samaritan overdose prevention statute. That's six oh four A, uh, dot zero four. And basically the wording of the statutes, you know, surrounding this whole issue is really not great. So, um, the Minnesota Department of Health has already, um, I don't know what the official wording is, but they're trying to revise one of the statutes so that the language is a little more clear as to who can administer it. Because right now, Good Samaritan, um, statute, statute covers non-healthcare professionals and it covers prescribers. But if I acting as a school nurse, I, I'm not covered under that, which is why it's a little tricky with my license. And then there's also the, um, Minnesota statute one fifty-one point three seven, legend drugs who may prescribe and possess. And essentially, so it basically says that in order for me to administer that, I have to have a physician or a prescriber sign off on our program slash standing order. And luckily I was able to reach out to a physician in the district and he's willing to sign off on that. The only thing we're waiting on right now is MDH is coming out with a toolkit. And, you know, as I was working on the standing order, I heard that this was in the works. So I could kind of put a pause on this, which is why it's been a couple of months since you've heard about this. So the MDH, uh, naloxone toolkit will include information on opioid overdose, emergency response procedures in school settings, sample protocol and procedure, which is the big one that I've been waiting for. Resources for educating and staff training, which is really good. And then resources on prevention, recovery and referral. So that was supposed to be out, at least, um, my nurse contacted, at MDH said it was supposed to be out last week. So I'm not really sure how much longer it's going to be, but I anticipate before the end of the month that that should be released. So I think we have like all our ducks in a row and I think we're ready, you know, once that toolkit comes out, we can have our physician look it over. I'm not really sure legally if there's anything, you know, we need to think about in regards to somebody outside coming and signing off on stuff. But, um, but I would think that next board meeting, we could move ahead and start voting on some of the stuff, so.
I just had a couple of questions. So I remember when we were talking about it and I'd done some research. Terry had mentioned something, Terry is, um, our MSBA, oh, he's your attorney, the attorney. So he mentioned something about a prescriber has to have some type of separate, like, they have to be an approved prescriber, it can't just be any MD. So when we were first discussing it, I, I don't know for sure that it's any family practice MD or internal med MD, but like it can't be a specialized M, like a specialty MD. I'm not positive on that, but there's something with a certification on that. And then also my concern too was how that affects our liabilities under insurable, under insurance. What are our insurance? Does it cover the person administering if something goes wrong? Or, or is there a liability waiver that we need to have, um, in regards to administration and death clauses, things like that? Is there anything that we need to be concerned about that might not fall under Good Samaritan law?
So wouldn't, what do we do in the case of EpiPen? Right? Like, who can administer an EpiPen within the school?
The physician usually signs an authorization form, so they're delegating to me.
Yeah.
And then I can delegate to a trained staff.
It's a total.
Kids go in the summer.
The child is prescribed that medication, I think it's different.
It is different, yeah. Narcan's a totally different.
But I'm talking about from a liability, like, like, you know, what happens today. So it's gotta be addressed in the policy somewhere.
Yeah. We can take a look at that. I, and what I was.
It should be similar from a liability perspective.
Liability wise, I would also think we'll call Amy from Marshall, uh, following the show. And we can show the documents to her before.
Yeah, and then just hope, and hopefully making sure that doctor is allowed to prescribe that for our school, that's right.
Yeah. Put two and a half.
That's like a third party, I mean.
As, as anybody is still.
The logistics of that, I know you obviously can prescribe in Minnesota, so.
Yeah, some, some of them are, it's like a certification you have to have to be able to prescribe Narcan.
What is a, so let's say we think a student has overdosed, we administer Narcan, but in reality they had, they were having like a seizure or something. Is there a negative effect to that individual if they get Narcan and weren't overdosing?
No.
Okay.
That's the beauty of this.
Yeah.
I feel like it's, you're not, you're not risking really anything.
Yeah.
Try and get it.
But if they're, if they're under the influence of fentanyl or force tranquilizers from farm and fleet, that's not, Narcan's not gonna work.
So it don't work on certain.
No. Opioid inhibitors. Which, it, it, basically the, the way it was explained to me, the way Narcan works is it's kind of like, you have your neural synapses and neural transmitters here and opioids attached to those and that's what makes the high feeling. Narcan kind of slips in between and makes it like a cover so that they can't, they can't transmit. Super layman's description, but.
Apologize if I haven't read your plan, is the, um, cost covered in that?
So there's actually, I forgot to mention that, there's the Steve Rummler Hope Network in Minnesota and they, you contact them and they give you naloxone, whether it's IM, intranasal, they can give you whatever you want and it's free.
What will we, what would we choose for that?
I would prefer intranasal just because there's less fumbling around with it. You just, but it's, um, more expensive for them to get. So, and then people usually want that, so it's kind of limited supply. But they did say they do have intranasal right now, so.
That's another question.
Yep.
And would you be the only one able to administer that in the next?
Right now, as the law states, I, nobody, I couldn't delegate it to anybody else. It would have to be me. Or a non-healthcare professional, so my health assistants wouldn't be able to. But a principal could. Yeah.
I just worry if you're not in a building, what good is having the emergency tool as we can.
Exactly.
And if you're gone that day, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, so my, in the program, my original thought was obviously the health assistants would be trained, not that they can give it at this point, um, but hopefully the law will, um, change that verbiage. And then, um, all the administrators for sure. Um, I thought about maybe the counselors or social workers as well, so.
We could also need all coaching staff trained?
Well.
Cause there isn't any of that staff at events typically, I mean.
So that, that's where it gets a little hairy is whether or not we can allow it after school. That's something we would have to discuss also.
Sure. Maybe phase two.
Phase two.
So will we at some point need to vote on whether we're going to have it onsite or not?
Yeah.
And then if we're going to have it onsite, here is the procedure.
Adoption policy. Yep, and so basically I want to wait till MDH provides that toolkit and then we have something that I didn't just like jury-rate together and something that a lot of other people have looked at, so.
But your recommendation is that we do have someone on site?
Yeah. I mean, I don't know data on like usage in our school. I mean, I've put out surveys, but nobody really answers those questions. The students don't see a survey, but I don't know, Jacob, do you think just with what you're seeing with vaping and all that other stuff? To me it's a while, but we.
Lauren, what's the, uh, what's the lifespan on it? When would we need it to be renewed or?
I think it's a year.
So it'd be a year.
But it could be, it could be six months, somewhere in there.
And does it have to be cold?
No, room temp. So lots of, um, schools just start with their AED and cabinets and things like that.
Thank you for the information.
Jacob, did you have any insight? Sorry, didn't mean to put you on the.
No, I mean, I'm not a healthcare professional, so.
I just mean on like what you've seen as far as drug usage in the school.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's only been one situation where it hasn't been a nicotine date. So far in the school year looking forward.
Interesting.
That doesn't mean that it's not occurring, but that's by far the most prevalent thing.
And had they had the, in your previous district?
It wasn't a thing.
No. Mindy, how about you?
Oh, nonstop.
Oh, but did they have Narcan onsite?
Oh, yeah. And we had trained, so my, I was trained, my principals were trained, um, our front office secretaries were trained, our security guards were trained and they all had Narcan close by. Multiple times throughout the year, we would have parents or relatives that were adults and not enrolled come to try and pick up kids and they were, they had been using opioids prior to that. Um, we had a couple of kids, um, that had happened with, we had some transdermal exposure because one of the things that was happening up north is, um, I'd cover a pen, dip a pen in liquid opioid, let it dry and then lay it on the floor or something that kids would like. And then kids, a kid picked it up and transdermally they were exposed. We also saw different things being liquefied and put on Pez candies or other candies and laid out just as they're just sitting here. And so kids would, I, I mean, it was, but drugs were very.
Did you deal with any lawsuits regarding the Narcan?
No. But then, and it was so prevalent there that literally I, one of my board members was an ambulance driver and he'd come in and one of the things he would tell me multiple, at each board meeting a month, yeah, I think my highest today was eleven. And so we had to administer eleven individuals, dispensers of Narcan to get someone to recover. Or, I, I mean, it, it was, it was hardcore. And, you know, and it's sad, you know, it's, it's, it always makes me think, how did we get to this point? You know, and, and I think Kathleen told the story that given something that you didn't even know what it was, you know, you thought it was an aspirin and it turned out to be something else, so it's.
Yeah. And I was gonna say, if you really want to be sick to your stomach, you can, if you're on Facebook, you can go, there's a group called Lost Voice of a Family. And it's parents just telling, you know, I lost my child this morning. It's, I can only read about two or three and I literally just can't stomach it anymore. But getting back to, I'm not sure who said it over there about the force tranquilizer that's designed using. And you're right, it doesn't, when they mix it with that.
Right.
Then it doesn't, um, work.
Yeah.
But I also, when I was here before, I was thinking like people buying drugs off the street and then I was talking to some people and I didn't realize, you know, people order, order things online. Like, okay, I never thought about that, so.
Yeah.
But, you know, they're, they're mixing it, it becomes cheaper, you know, and it's just a mess. But, um, the client of mine who lost his daughter six months ago, um, and I can actually send the link if you want. His best friend happens to be a brain surgeon, world renowned and, um, he actually, they've done some radio shows and different things together now where he can explain in regular people terms what's happening to the body because they do use fentanyl during surgeries and things. But obviously it's controlled and they're monitoring the patient and things like that. But he does talk about what happens, like we were talking about the suppression and things like that. But they both were actually invited to CNN, um, last week, Anderson Cooper had a town hall. And they, they were able to submit questions, they were in the gallery, um, they weren't actually on the line, but they did talk. And they, they were able to submit questions, they were in the gallery, they weren't actually on the line, but they did talk, and he knows Anderson Cooper from something else anyhow, I guess, but. But, you know, they are talking about ordering things and, you know, one of his points is that it's not a liberal or conservative issue, it's a societal issue. And it doesn't matter, you know, what side you're on as far as that goes. You know, it's just people are you know, for the first time in a twelve month period, over a hundred thousand people have died. From this, if you look at, you know, you're talking about the data in the church, it's just insane right now. And it's not getting any better.
Right, and you're very accurate in ordering it, because going back to my former experience, I let go of a school employee. Because she was involved as a money person within one of the groups that was ordering from China. And getting fentanyl and Narcan.
Yeah, luckily stopped.
She said she didn't bring it to school, but I wasn't gonna give her a second chance.
Tic Tac, right?
So we're, we're not voting, honestly, but is anyone a patient that have it in our school?
I think we need more information. I, just speaking also, like, I, I lost my baby brother less than two years ago because of an overdose and every time he's needed to be revived, it's seven to twelve doses of Narcan. So I'm fully, I'm very much an advocate and this is not the platform for me to speak about that right now, but I'm very much an advocate that Narcan should be everywhere, I just with the liabilities, when you have a public school system, we do need to look through all of those things. Having Narcan onsite and if it not being used and an overdose happens at the school, are we liable? Because we didn't use it, are we liable because we did, there's a lot of variables that need, we need to look into before I think we make any motion, that's my two cents as a medical professional.
Yeah, and one of the, if I can say something to that, one of the things that I noticed is there's a huge article about, you know, the different states, so they may be different, but U W L actually installed theirs and they had photographers there with the chain pictures of the actual installation and stuff, so. Yeah, I think they're probably in our school and we know, obviously, unfortunately, we also know you know, what some of that's from, but details, yeah.
Okay, so hopefully by next month, we'll get an update and maybe have a and you'll check what.
Yep.
Liability, insurance. Anything else we need?
And I also will check the MSBA and all the.
If the MD can prescribe it.
Yep. I got that on the list too.
All right, I'm good. Let's keep moving along, policies. Wellness. Yeah, we updated the wellness policy. Yep, yeah, so there's audit. So there's a lot of red lines on this, but it's updated. It follows the MSBA and auto policy as well as some requirements that were in the audit. That's it. Anything controversial, I don't think, in medical room? Any questions on that? Okay, and then the other policy, I just had to update a minor thing on the advertising policy we approved. And that was because I in error had reference to being a F A one C three. And that's not correct, so I just dropped that from the policy. That's it. Any questions on that? Sure you all read them very thoroughly, thank you.
Yeah, it worked.
Do we need a motion for those?
I think it's just.
Yeah, these are just information. Got it. So we will need a motion up next though, if you're eager to make a motion. We have the consent agenda, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion.
I'll second. Is there any discussion? Could you pull up the donations?
I have two cards here for you deciding about, I don't know what you do with people that are here.
So we had a couple donations this night. Uncared lunch balances and they have donated previously in his memory. Um, that's a Brownsville family.
That's very sweet.
And then some art supplies, so that's cool. Also saw we had a retirement of a very long-term elementary teacher, anything you wanted to say?
Sixteen-year elementary teacher, so Jeff, would you?
Yeah, a member of our third grade team who preceded me by about ten years in this building, had experience prior to that. Consistently delivers very strong results in the classroom with her students and, you know, we're all, we're focused on literacy and she's a strong educator, so she'll be missed. And she also serves on the oversight committee, so, you know, a leader in our, on our staff and in our district, so. Thank you to Robin for her years of service and you'll, you'll know it's a curious timeline for her retirement, it's literally the first day of school, so that was due to, you know, kind of her, her planning. And so we'll have to, you know, be creative on our planning as well to make sure that we're ready to go for the start of school year, so. Thank you for her service.
Yeah, and, and she is, in a little bit of time that I've known Robin, I've really enjoyed it, she's done a great job. Part of what this is, is for educators who entered the field before eighty-eight, there is something called rule of ninety. So when your age and your years in the classroom add up to ninety. Then you are eligible for retirement. And so, you know, I wish Robin all the best in her retirement and I told her in the meeting together, yes, we will figure out because on the fourth is when she hits her rule. And so that's why we're doing that, so I'll make the accommodation, she's okay with us hiring ahead of time and getting ready for the classroom, et cetera. But I also told her that I am so incredibly jealous. Because after she showed me that, I added up my time, I would have hit my rule this year too if I hadn't started in a tribal school. So it's like, life is just not fair. So, yes.
Well, I don't want to interview no more superintendents.
I wouldn't have retired anyway, but it was just like, oh, I'm that old.
And thank you for hiring boys golf coaches, right?
Yes, that was a great job.
Good choice.
Okay, we need to vote, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. All right. Uh, we are at number thirteen. Leading to the end. Resolution twenty-three oh two relating to proposed property tax abatement for parking lot improvement projects, calling for public hearing.
Sure.
So as we went through and we looked at the facility stuff and we're, we have the four areas that Ellers talked about that we could access money and Apex was here talking about that. One of the areas is abatement money for redoing parking lots and at this point, this is set up. In order to do the abatement, we have to have an abatement hearing. And I met with Julie and Pat and Ellers the other day and we looked through the timeline, we should be able to get everything set and ready for this and do the work this summer, like we're planning to. If we're on the timeline of approval of this resolution at this meeting, on the April nineteenth meeting. Then we will have, right before the meeting, we'll have what's called an abatement hearing. It's very much like a truth and taxation hearing. So it's just putting out and giving the public time to voice if they're okay with us doing an abatement bond, okay? Abatement bonds are one of the type of bonds that a school district can do without going to vote. And so that's why we want to be transparent and put it out there for our public. To be able to say yes or whatever and that will have what the impact will be with this abatement bond is my understanding from Ellers too. Right now, we, I asked, I directed Ellers and everyone to look at what the maximum would be. Which is about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the district office parking lot, all the parking lots around the secondary complex. And then doing the baseball field area, okay, parking lot there. Now, we could pull back and not do one or the other, we'll get that information from our survey, et cetera, so we have community input and then we can decide there. One of the advantages to doing this this year, and it was brought up to me, you know, that there's some light issues in front of the secondary complex, you know, it's not lit real well at night when you walk in. If we tear up the parking lots, we can move electrical at the same time. Try and get some additional lighting or some additional things in there. There are other things that we could think about at that point too.
Like plumbing and, like plumbing?
It could be plumbing and that, in those areas to get out to like the softball fields, if you, you know, if we can get the plumbing going to softball fields for that or outdoor bathroom, you know, plumbed bathrooms and water. The other thing though would be if we want to entertain the idea of electric cars. If we're running the electrical for lights anyway, do we want to have a spot where eventually you could tap through that, put a, a electric car?
Do we have any out there right now?
No.
Smart?
No, you know, it's just, so that's what this process is about with facilities, planning and maintenance is one thing leads to another and then we just keep noting and writing down and they're all options that are out there, we don't have to take any of them. But we just wanna talk about them and know and get feedback. So this would be just, what you're saying today is yes, they're willing to have the hearing on the nineteenth. And then we'll take the next steps from there.
A motion to approve?
I second.
Is there any discussion? There are all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this is approved. Nikki, looks like we'll be finding it. Anything additional?
I love to adjourn meeting.
There you go.
Second.